Good evening and welcome to the January 27, 2025 Committee of the Whole. Could you please stand to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call the members.
Roll call the members, Councilor Agenzio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Garino Swaya.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Herramio is absent. Councilor Kelly is absent. Councilor McKenna?
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky absent. Councilor Zambudo absent. And Council President Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. First item on the agenda is a presentation from the Parking Director Informational Presentation Relatives to the New Resident Parking Program for 25.
Thank you, members of the council, and congratulations, Mr. Council President and Madam Vice President, on your new executive session. My name is Zach Bobb, I'm the Director of Parking. I come before you tonight to present some upcoming changes into the parking atmosphere, some of the new additives to our world. One of the biggest programs we do is the resident parking. It goes citywide. It's about 30,000 vehicles a year, based on residential stickers as well as visitor passes. In calendar year 2025, the city is looking to bring on digital parking permits, meaning you are no longer required to display a physical sticker or placard on your vehicle or dash. Your license plate will now act as your permit. And just to begin, a little introduction to that, we're going to talk about resident parking, resident parking stickers reimagined through digital permits. And in conjunction of this new change, we are also bringing on mobile LPR enforcement, license plate recognition, to be more efficient and get around the city in a better time. We have outreach and coordination with this program as there is not much changing from the end of the resident in their vehicles with resident stickers. The big change is going to be for the uses of visitor passes, which we'll touch base during this presentation. So just a little detail about digital permits. We are moving an outdated system of physical resident stickers, moving to a digital-based system, which will both assist online and in-person applicability, transforming labor-intensive tasks into strategic efforts. Digital permits changes and benefits to the residents. No longer will you have a sticker on your windshield. No longer will the sticker say you're from the City of Revere or have the abbreviations depending on what ward you're in or what zone of the street you come back to. Nobody will know that you are a resident of the City of Revere any longer. We will expanding citywide coverage with the addition of LPR system, which run in conjunction with this program. That is something that I know the councilors get many phone calls on after, you know, a long weekend, something that I get, we're just not getting around the city too, in a timely manner. This is going to change that. Right now, it takes us sometimes upwards of a week to get through the entire community. This change is going to allow us to do that in two to four days, weather permitted. Cost reduction for this program is going to drop dramatically. Right now, it costs the city $3.50 for every sticker fulfilled. This change is going to reduce it down to a dollar per permit. Two-thirds of the cost will be removed from our current permit program. Just a note, we will still have available services in office for those who do not have access to a computer, smartphone, or individuals who may not be tech savvy. We understand we have a segment of our population, we still need a service, and we are not discrediting or keeping those out of mind. We are making sure they are on a focus in our forefront. In conjunction with digital permits, we will be bringing on license plate recognition. We are going to install cameras on top of our parking cars, and as we drive through the neighborhood, this computer system is going to help us identify vehicles that don't belong. It's going to also help us identify vehicles that may or not paying their parking tickets or end up on scoff law. There's also a tie-in to the Revere Police with this system. There's going to be an integration towards their current enforcement agency, which is Sigis, the software they use. So as my parking team patrols the roadway throughout the city, with that integration with Sigis, they'll be pulling up information on stolen plates or stolen vehicles, and we'll be sending secret messages that my parking team will not be aware of, to a direct email to the Revere Police for follow-up. Those emails are going to detail the vehicle found, the plate that was found, time and location of that vehicle for RPD follow-up. It has been some troublesome trying to get some stolen vehicles off the roadway in the city, rogue vehicles that may not belong, and this is going to assist the police with that as well, on top of doing a better job enforcing our residential parking regulations. So just some information on how license plate readers work. License plate recognition, or automatic license plate recognition, alerts you to wanted or unpermitted vehicles, even when you are not looking for them. This solution gives you real-time insights into your environment while helping your team work more efficiently. If vehicles are not in the correct permanent zone, then the ALPR will notify the parking compliance officer by scanning a plate or multiple plates along the roadway by simply driving past them. The PCO will receive alerts of hits on their known devices inside of the patrol vehicles, and they will be prompted to know if this is a violation or not. ALPR is not affected by climate changes, snow, rain, or et cetera. ALPR will function effectively regardless of complications or the environment in which it is deployed. So on nights where it's snowy inclement weather, or rainy where it's labor-intensive, it's hard to put an officer out there in the elements of the weather, this is going to allow us to maintain our structure even when the weather is not being forgiving to us. Currently outdated parking compliance may take two weeks to effectively, effectively and efficiently enforce the City of Revere. ALPR eliminates the labor and simplifies enforcement and compliance with automatic plate reading. Automatic plate reading covers far more ground in a reduced timely manner. Plate reading produces hits, which are essentially notifications on parking violations, canceled plates, scoff law, mismatched plates, resident permits, and more. Part of this change, location mapping and zoning. I will go through it tonight. We have an opportunity to really change the dynamic of the parking world, to be better beneficial to the residents. Currently, right now, the regulations behind a resident sticker ties you to your street or an adjacent street. We know there's very congested areas of communities, Ward 1 season, Ward 2 season, and Ward 3 season. This will allow us to kind of reform our outdated parking permit regulations. What I mean by that is looking to more zone-based program, where if you live in an area of the community and you're surrounded by other residents with red-colored stickers, for instance, why is it that we are not allowing you to travel within seven streets in a community rather than keep you locked down to your street and adjacent? And that, I'll be looking to work with the council, and I'll show an example of what I'm talking about more so for that. But besides that tracking, chalking timed areas, making sure we are efficient with those areas, this ALPR system will help with that. They will automatically chalk the tires for us, let us know when we come back two hours later if that vehicle has moved or not. It will help us be more efficient and effective with our enforcement. This is all going to be recorded in a backend system to pull up these records at any later date. ALPR automatically attacks when a vehicle is parked overtimed on timed areas, and the approval of a resident parking zone, and an approved or non-approved resident parking zone. City boundaries are established through this system by drawing polygons within the area, which brings me back to my zone-based. And I'll touch on that. More outreach and coordination that we're doing to kind of make sure that the public understands where we're going with this, what we're trying to accomplish, and make it easy with this adjustment. We have partnered with Revere Mobile City Hall. We've been out on, boots on the ground for the past two weeks with them, trying to get the message across while also assisting with permit applications. Same time we're out there, we're letting people know about the new change with the digital system, what to expect and what not to expect with it, how this is going to work for you and the challenges it may face. We're going to continue work in our coordination. We have an appointment with the Senior Center for a few hours to do a similar presentation that we put together tonight, also assist them in their applications and any questions and challenges they may face. We're doing the same thing with the Jack Satterhouse. We're in conversations to schedule at the Carl Hyman Towers, the Friendly Gardens on Revere Street, and to can you get to the most vulnerable population that's going to have trouble with the technological change? We want to make sure this is an easy transition for everybody. Frequently asked question we've been dealing with, how do the new resident permits and visitor passes work? Starting March 1st, each resident permit is digitally tied to a specific vehicle's license plate. This allows enforcement officers to enforce parking using license plate reader technology. You will no longer need to attach a sticker to your car or use a hang tag once you purchase a new, or renew a permit after March 1st, 2025. Otherwise, the system will work the same as previous years. How you received your sticker in the past, automatic fulfillment, you should still expect that. If there was troubles with your address due to automatic fulfillment, then you can reach out to our department, we can guide you through that process. Visitor permits are similarly tied to a specific license plate. Although the license plate may be charged, changed via the customer portal to reflect that of whichever visitor is using the pass at any time, the portal allows unlimited change into visitor license plates. These changes take effect immediately and are free of charge. Use this guide for instructions on how to manage. So we also attached a little guide, which I handed all the councilors tonight, because that is the biggest change. Instead of years past, you stop by my department, apply for a visitor pass, and you tell your visitor to throw it on their dashboard when they come by. That is a way of the past. Now, it is required that the resident either calls the department, calls 311, or calls City Hall Systems, or goes online to a 24/7 system themselves. They need to have the license plate of the applicant, they need to have their digital visitor pass number and their name, and they will be able to go online and activate that visitor pass for as many days as they need. One of the problems that we run in with visitor passes is we have about 3,000 of them out there. To maintain them and track them is very labor-intensive and has many challenges. This new change now requires you to go online and activate it per use. If that plate is entered more than eight days in a month, you are going to be stopped. If you are trying to put a visitor pass on a vehicle that is trying to circumvent taxes, that is going to be stopped. The system is going to maintain and monitor this and help us track on the abuse that's we've been seeing out there. I'm not sure if anyone is aware, but you know, I'll drive to work each morning and I see visitor passes on people's dashboards. What that tells me is somebody is living in that house, somebody applied for that visitor pass, and they're just using it on a nightly basis to circumvent the rules and regulations behind this. So moving into this step with a digital system in conjunction with LPR enforcement is, I think, is the next step this parking department needs to take. And that is the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to take on any questions that any of the members of the council have.
Thank you, Director Bobo. Councilor Garino Swaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, Zach, thank you for this presentation. I have a question. You said you're saving money, the three, from $3.50 to a dollar per sticker.
Correct.
But how expensive, how expensive is the LPR to install? The software to maintain in all the vehicles? And what will happen when it's on a weekend and the parking department isn't working and I have to call the police department, for example, like on a Sunday, and there's no parking officer working? Are the police going to have the same thing in their vehicle?
Great question, no. So currently, right now, I got to be honest, I'd be surprised if the police are giving out parking tickets for permit parking. I haven't heard of it, but my team works seven nights a week. The only time they're not working is Sunday at 6:00 a.m. until Sunday at 10:00 p.m. Seven nights a week they are out there. This vehicle would be patrolling the streets all seven nights for that exact reason. So if there's ever a concern over the weekend, please send us a cue alert, give me a phone call. I always answer my phone on the weekends, be happy to get somebody out there to address it, and if not, then I can work in conjunction with the police, provided the plate, me or any of my supervisor, any of my parking control officers are able to type in that plate into their equipment and tell you if it has a resident sticker or not.
I'm concerned in the areas that are 24/7 no parking. And we do call the police, whether it's in Beechmont, in Riverside, in Point of Pines. So we do call the police on a Sunday if we need someone to come out and have a car removed, especially if they're parked in a crosswalk or, you know, covering a little bit over someone's driveway. And it's happened to me numerous times that I have had to call, and the police have had to come and give a ticket.
So they would still be able to enforce regulations such as that in regards to resident stickers? No, that, that software, that information would be stuck within the parking department. I can definitely look at ways to explore on getting that information over the police.
Okay, and then the cost effectiveness, even though it's, you're saving so much money from $3.50 to a dollar, how much is the LPR costing?
So the initial package for one vehicle was $38,000, and then on top of it, we needed the subscription, which is $6,000 a year. But that cost savings from the parking program will pay for the original implementation of the first LPR system, but within three to six months, the amount of issuance that you'll be able to get out of the system will surpass any type of cost that came with it.
And how many stickers were actually given to the City of Revere?
Altogether, resident stickers and visitor passes is about $29,000 this year. In years past, we've had $31,000, $32,000.
And now, what do you do if, you were talking about the, the guest parking?
Yes.
And activating, you know, the, the guest parking? Now, what happens if you have a, a child and their girlfriend stays over most of the days, every single day, so she can't stay over? What am I going to do, tell her she has to leave?
I would never, I would never tell you how to treat the guests in your home. All I would do is just say that if she is there more than eight days a month, then she might run into a parking ticket. So I don't know.
I just think it's totally unfair if you have guests that do stay at the house, and you're limiting people to actually, limiting to eight days. I don't think that's feasible, and especially when you're giving one guest pass. Are you still doing this only one per household?
So ultimately, I have no control over any of that. That is, lies with the Traffic Commission. They're the ones who kind of voted and approved the ordinance that I enforce. I'm willing to look at any open changes and be respectful of any changes and listen to any concerns of the residents and constituents. But right now, as it's written, is there's only one visitor pass per property, and it's allowed for eight days a month each, of use each month.
Would it be?
If it's willing for the councilors to present something for the Traffic Commission for a change, I'd be fully supportive of that. But it lies within the Traffic Commission to make those changes. I just enforce whatever the ordinances they provided me with.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Agenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Bobo, for your presentation. It sounds great. Is the ticketing going to change? Will you still, if you are getting a ticket, it'll still go on your windshield, or will that be nailed to your?
Correct. No, it'll still be, so, under our master no law that we operate in, we have to affix the ticket to the vehicle unless a vehicle operator made it very difficult for the parking officer to do. The law requires us to affix tickets to the vehicle.
Okay, and you may have said this, will that plate recognition, will it recognize if the plate belongs to the vehicle?
So that's more in enforcement depth?
Like if somebody attached plates or anything like that?
So the police would be may aware of that information through some of the communications that we can create through this system for attached vehicle plates that may not belong?
So this system will recognize that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you can send that into, so, they'll send that into plates we found, and they'll, they'll create, it's kind of like a ghost email, that my parking officers don't even know about, the Genetek camera system sends an email to whatever email is provided to us from the police station. And it tells them about specific vehicles we found, the descriptions of the cars, and they'll attach images of those vehicles to that email as well, so that the police know exactly what to look out for.
Okay, thank you very much. All set, Mr. President?
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I've got a couple of questions. The one question, so, for 10 years, I've been working to get Beechmont 24/7. And with the zoning parking, what's going to happen is, and I don't know, you can tell me if I'm wrong or not, but someone from East Oshgosh on Winthrop Ave that lives down near Short Beach can come now and park in front of 10 Winthrop Ave and will take, and go into the train station. And he'll, he can leave his car there for eight hours. So he's, he's taking up a resident parking space, especially in Beechmont, because a lot of us don't have driveways. So this was the purpose, to put the 24/7 in, so people from Swamp Scott or Lynn or wherever wouldn't park in front of the people that live closest to the T. Now, you're saying that these people, they don't have to do adjacent parking anymore. They can come from nine blocks away and park in front of Johnny's house who lives on 10 Winthrop Ave. I just don't think that is fair. And you're going to put zoning, zoning, what, each section's going to be zoned? I just don't think it's fair. Because, like I said, a lot of these people don't have driveways. A lot of people have stairs, they have to take their groceries, they have to park in front of their houses, take their groceries up, stairs, and if Johnny's parking, you know, there for eight hours, this person's not going to have a pocket space. So, and he has the same problem. He doesn't have the hills, well, he does have the hills like I have, but I have the hills, and I just don't think it's fair for Beechmont to go through that. If you want to do it in Precinct 3, that's great, but 1 and 2, that's not going to work. It's going to be hard. And you know who's going to get the brunt of it? They're not going to call you, they're going to call me. So I'm going to get the calls. And what do I say to them? Oh, well, sorry, this is the way it is. I, I just don't think it's fair. That's number one. Number two is, there's a lot of cars in parking lots around the city that are, their registrations expired. As councilors, we get calls all the time to go and look, and then we give them to you. Would your car be, your cars be willing to go through parking lots and, and identify cars that have been there for two months or three months without, you know, expired registrations?
That's a great question. I'd have to know what parking lots you're informing, because if it's privately owned, we don't have rights over them besides handicap space or fire lanes. But if there's a few off-street lots that you're concerned of, absolutely, but that's the other thing these cameras will do, is they're going to work extremely well with governing our off-street lots, similar to City Hall Lot here, Central Ave, McKinley School Parking Lot, a history museum. You'll be able to go through a lot in five minutes and pick up all the information you need to be able to maintain enforcement. So that's definitely a benefit. As far as registered cars and unregistered cars, that would be reported to the police as that's a police matter. We would only be able to ticket them and cite them, but we don't have the ability to remove vehicles.
Well, at least you can identify them, and the police could ticket them and remove them, they can tell them. I mean, I think that's perfect.
Absolutely.
I don't think it should be up to you. I have one more question. So as a councillor, as a ward councillor, and I'm sure all the ward councillors, all the councillors, get calls that there's a car in front of someone's house, and it doesn't have the right sticker on it, and I can't park there, and I live there, so I call you, you come down, you ticket them, and then they learn their lesson. Now, as councilors, we don't have that access anymore, because you can't give us that access because it's, you know, it's a law.
So from a councillor's perspective, nothing would change on that end. If there's a vehicle that you don't believe it belongs, then you would just call the parking department, say, hey, this is the plate, I don't think they belong to the area, and then parking would come by and follow up with it. But I think residents need to understand, these are public roadways, so whether the car has a permanent or not, they have a right to park if they're legal. If it's a violation due to our bylaws and our local ordinances, then absolutely understandable. But yeah, that is going to be one of the changeovers coming in, is that you're not going to see the physical stickers, but for the most part, I think we know our neighbors' cars. I think you kind of know who drives what, and if you don't, then usually it's a phone call or a cue alert to the parking department for follow-up.
So what I'm going to ask you is, is there any way, and as Councilor Garino Swaya said, on the weekends, you know, we call, and sometimes people don't answer their phones. And so we're stuck, okay? And I was just wondering if you, and I don't know if this is, you can do this or not, could you give us the names of the enforcement offices that are on, and their numbers, if they're on the road during the weekends? So in case we have a problem and the police don't come, then we can call them and say, hey. I mean, I have one, and I call him all the time, and he comes down and he gives them a ticket, whatever. But, I mean, I think that would be very useful. I know you can't give us, I asked you if you could give us the, you know, the identifier that identifies the license plate, and you said it's a law, you can't do that because of personal.
Yeah, privacy compliance, we can't.
Right, but I'm just wondering, just, just to help us a little bit?
Point of information? Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
State your point, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Councilor McKenna. So I use 311 on the weekends. If I see a car that's out of place or parked wrong, I use 311. I put a ticket in, and it doesn't take long for them to get down there, and they always email you back on the ticket and let you know what the action they took was, whether the car's still there or not, if they issued a ticket or if it was parked legally and I was just being a dope, you know, so, that's all. Thank you.
Good to know, Councilor.
Thank you, Councilor.
So thank you for that information, Councilor Cogliandro.
I'm done.
As soon as, when I took over the department, one of the things I did realize was that with an overnight resident parking program, we did lack communication throughout the councilors, throughout the residents. So in my first year as Director, that's one of the first things we did was integrate 311 into our world to ensure that if it's 2:00 in the morning and you wake up and you see a car that doesn't belong, you can get ahold of us. And to piggyback off Councilor Cogliandro, we got a 20, 20 to 30-minute average closeout, depending on where we are, we get there as soon as we can, absolutely, especially in the overnight period. As soon as they get that alert on their cellphones, cue alerts tied into every one of my parking guy's cellphones, or girls, they get those text messages right away, and they know they have to respond. And there was another point that you had mentioned about the zone parking. The idea about the zone parking from my perspective is I've, I've done everything in this parking department in the last seven years. I've, I've been on the street, I've given out tickets, I've enforced the meters, I've fixed the meters, and I've worked in this office. One of the hardest parts that I see time and time again is there's no reprieve for our own residents, and that's why I bring up the zone-based parking. I would not be doing this, this is not something I'm pushing today, this is something that I would continue to have a conversation, especially with the Ward 1, Ward 3, and Ward 2 councilors, as those are where the train stations lie, those are where you're seeing the abuse. My idea behind the zone-based parking was just a benefit for our own residents. For instance, if one of our residents lives at 136 Crescent Ave, and they have a girlfriend or a friend, whoever the case may be, or a relative who lives at 88 Crescent Ave, if they drive down there, which is 300 feet away, that's a ticket, because on 136 Crescent, they have a yellow overnight sticker. 88 Crescent, they have red Zone 1 stickers. All I'm looking to do is not create more of a hardship for the residents or the neighbors by allowing people from one end of the city to come closer to the train station, but I'm just trying to find a way to allow our own residents to travel within their community, because tying you down to your street nor adjacent street, it's tough. For instance, if I'm in the Point of Pines and I live on Bateman Ave, and I go park on Lancaster, which is a parallel street, by the letter of the ordinance, that's a violation. I'm two streets over from my own house. You know, we, I'm just trying to find some wiggle room in here to provide more benefits to our residents, to allow them to travel within their community and not worry about grabbing a visitor pass or running in the house and having that panic moment just to park their car. Absolutely, I don't want people at 300 Endicott coming down to Atlantic Ave. I don't want people at the top of Franklin coming down to Dehawn to be near the train station. I don't want residents from the Sagamaw Community be able to park in the Point of Pines, if that's not what the councils in the community want. I was only presenting this change as this is something we can do with this computer system that will work extremely efficiently and allow some reprieve and some wiggle room for our own residents within our communities. And it could be simple as we take Ward 1, Ward 2, Ward 3, and make four separate subsections within that ward or zone where we display signage, a Zone 1A sticker can park on these seven streets that are located in Zone 1A, and they'll be geographically located. Same thing with Zone 1B, and a law the way down the line. To make sure that we are not allowing the abuse to continue, we are maintaining some structure, refining some wiggle room within it. That's all.
Thank you. Councilor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Zach, thanks so much for the presentation tonight. I was thrilled to hear about the outreach efforts with the Senior Center. I think that's very important. Anything with translations in that sense for the rest of the city?
Yes, yes, so we've, we've worked on translating all our documents that we put out. We put a citywide email blast out to anyone who's already in my permit system to notify them of this change, and we are also going to continue to do those email blasts to get these activation guides out and any other information that comes. Again, the one, the main point I want to get through is for resident stickers, this is a minimal change. It's a huge benefit. If your windshield cracks, you don't need to come back to the parking department for a new sticker. If you get a new vehicle, same plate, you don't need to come back to the parking department for a new sticker. You are fine for the year. So that is a benefit for them. The hard, the more questionable one is activating a visitor pass every time you need to use it, and that's just to make sure that we're getting rid of road cars, we're getting rid of people circumventing the ordinance and regulations, to make sure that we are. The idea of this program is to ensure people on this roadway at night are paying taxes to the city. And we are prioritizing resident parking. And this is just one more step in that direction.
Great. And I read that this technology is able to scan 2,000 plates in the span of a couple of minutes.
You can ultimately drive 50 miles an hour and get accurate readings, yes. And anytime you don't get an accurate reading, you'll be notified through the system. You'll be allowed to do a plate correction. And it has AI technology that next time it reads that plate, it's going to do a far better job picking that information up. We've tested it in some snow. We've seen snow on top of license plates that does a really good job. The vendor, Genetek, is out of Canada. So they make this hardware out of Canada. That was a big concern of me being in a northeast environment. We deal with all type of elements. I want to make sure whatever technology I'm buying into is going to work through all the seasons. And they actually said it works, the only time they have trouble is humidity, which was a reprieve for me. All right, cold weather, snowy nights, I want to make sure it's running well. So humidity was one of the things that they, they work with. But other than that, the cold elements, the rainy elements, it works great.
Great. I was curious about snow and dirty license plates and things like that. Thanks.
Definitely. Thank you.
Councillor Garina Swaya.
Just one more. How many cars is this going in?
One for now. This fall, we'll add a second one.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Zach, I know you and I have spoken already about this and, you know, a lot of this, you know, I'm in favor of. And you know I had concerns about the visitor passes. But what I wanted to ask you was the number of permits per apartments. Say someone has a three-bedroom apartment and there's six people in the apartment. You know, imagine. How do we handle something like that?
Councillor Nowosowski, I think that's a great question. I think that's a conversation that me and the councillors need to start having and submit something to the traffic commission. Right now, the ordinance does not limit you to a number of resident stickers for apartments that have, buildings that have six families or less, six units or less than them. There are no restrictions. My system stops you at 10, but should you come to me, ask for an 11th, I have nothing to hold water to say I can't give it to you. I think that's something that this council should be looking into, as well as myself, to try to put something through the traffic commission, to look in limiting the amount of resident stickers for on-street parking that we issue per address. I know it's a little bit dicey because not everyone has driveways. Many people in the Beauchamp community, triple deckers aren't having driveways, seeking on-street parking. So we'll take some multiple meetings and some conversations. But no, right now, to answer your question, councillor, there is nothing to stop somebody in a three-family to get 10 stickers per unit.
We will, I'm sure we will ask the traffic commission to address that. Secondly, regarding the visitor passes, you and I spoke and I wanted to clarify to a lot of people here. Like, if someone comes to visit you long-term, they're allowed to get a long-term visitor pass? Up to seven days, I believe?
That's another situation that we can create along the line with this, as long as we're successful getting some of the rogue visitor passes out. The idea of bringing this on is to try to clean up what we haven't been able to clean up with the abuse in the past few years.
Okay. And based on this form that you gave us about the visitor pass activation.
Correct.
And the way we spoke the other day was that if somebody comes in and has multiple visitors during the day, that the visitor pass goes by the plate number.
Correct.
So if somebody, if I go and visit someone down the pines and I'm there in the morning, whoever I visit down there can call in to activate the visitor permit for my plate in front of their house. But if somebody comes in an hour later, they can activate another plate for that, another four hours or a day or whatever it may be. But it's the, the eight days per week is by plate number, not by visitor pass.
That is correct. It's each plate is allowed eight visits per, per month. But yes, you would be able to allow, you'd be allowed to change the license plate on that visitor pass in a moment's notice. You can have a visitor for two hours, somebody can come for an additional three hours. Whatever plate you used to activate it, the old plate will now become inactive.
Okay. And realize too, if someone comes down for multiple people, they can call you folks and you can make adjustments to that?
Correct. Parking will still find a way. If you're going to have multiple guests over, if it's a milestone event or celebration, a celebration of life, whatever the case may be, contact the parking department. We still have our ways to assist with our enforcement during gatherings.
Okay. And let me mention home care.
Yes.
The home care workers. And many years ago, I believe it was 2012, I put into this council that the parking department initiate home care visitor passes, that they could use the whole city, anywhere in the city. And if they had to be there all day, they could be there all day. If they had to go from Shirley Ave up to Ward 6, they could do that with the same, same visitor pass. And are we still charging them $5 a day for that?
$5 a day, citywide remains the same.
Not a day.
$5 for the permit, citywide remains the use.
So it's, it's minor as far as the amount of money is concerned. And that lately, the, the businesses who they work for have been paying for it, not the home care workers themselves.
Correct.
Because they have a process that they have to use in order to get it, to justify that they work for those folks.
Louis, in my office, the assistant director, has a great relationship with a lot of the healthcare providers. So every January, they'll send us a whole packet with all their applications, registrations attached, and then a check for all permits. So we still maintain those communications with the MGH, East Boston Health, or Cambridge Health Alliance along Broadway. They still do a good job with that.
And if I may, Mr. President, my last thing is talk about the zones. I had a big concern about the zones because like you said, you don't want people from Franklin Ave parking down in front of my, my house near the train station.
Absolutely.
That, you know, I suggested using the precinct zone maps. Or if those are too large beyond the seven streets that you are proposing, that we can make them smaller. We could have a 2A, a 2B, a 2C, a 2D, a 2E if we had to. And make, only make it seven streets. Why? So the people on Hitchborne Street can't go down to Kimball Ave and park there all day long.
And, you know, whatever the wishes of the constituents and the ward councillors, is definitely something I'm willing to work on. I just thought we had to find a better way to suit our residents between your street and or adjacent street. Certain nights where you're coming to park on Hitchborne Street, you're parking on Thornton. You're not fitting on Hitchborne. Certain nights, you might be coming to Bellingham, you're looking to park on Crest Ave. There's just no room. And technically, those two situations would result in a parking ticket in current regulations. And it's just not fair. You know, somebody working second shift, third shift might get home at a certain hour and parking is at a premium at that time. I just, I'm just trying to find another way to help. And not only just with nighttime parking, but daytime operations. I want to go visit a friend throughout the community. Does it matter that they're three streets over? Is that a big concern of ours? I don't think that was the idea of this program. I think it was to try to limit the abuse by the train stations. And I think that's going to be our focus. It's going to maintain our focus because we've seen the cleanup over there. I just do think it's time to look for a little assistance.
Right. You know, we don't, from Hitchborne Street, Franklin Ave. Those are adjacent streets, but even if they had to go over to Thornton Street to park, there wouldn't be a big issue on that. You're not going to get a lot.
No, but those adjustments come on the team of my enforcement side where the black and white says, your street nor adjacent, my team needs to understand, oh, well, Hitchborne Street is a parallel. It just makes it confusing. It's just trying to streamline and make it more simple, better understandable.
Right. The reason we did adjacent was mainly because of street sweeping. You know, so people that, on my, my area, just all the cars have to move off Hitchborne, Highland, Thornton, all the way down. And there was basically no place to park. You have to park on other streets and others. So we allowed it for adjacent. So now if we have to expand it a little, we expand it a little and work with you guys and talk to folks about it.
Absolutely.
Mr. President, thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hermio.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Actually, councillor Nowosowski covered a lot of it, especially around the home care stuff. Just wanted to make sure. Now, is that only for certified home, home-takers and stuff? Because I have heard some constituents that maybe are taking care of their mom across town or whatever and would still like to extend them the equal grace. I mean, they're providing a service that otherwise, you know.
Absolutely. So like a, a home healthcare aide, but they're family members. We have special family caretaker permits we issue for those ones. We have healthcare workers for the ones who have the title or the background to show us. And then the ones who are just taking care of a family member within the community, we have special family caretaker permits.
Correct.
As long as we can get a doctor's note from the resident who needs the care, the doctor's note tells us that a person needs help with day-to-day activities and provides information on who's given that care, we make those assists all the time.
Perfect.
Absolutely.
Thank you, councillor. Permission to speak from the chair?
Thank you, Director Babo. Great presentation. For 99%, I just see a couple tweaks that you might already have in place. Military leave requests. I think that would be something that a more than a seven-day extension might need.
We give military leave resident stickers. If you provide us documentation that you're here, but you are in military leave or you were on deployment, your vehicle, we accommodate.
Awesome. And medical requests councillor Hermio touched on.
Yep.
Okay.
We still accommodate those.
Those, those are my two issues. And then, thank you very much.
The idea of the parking department is not to make it any more difficult on our residents as parking is sometimes tough in this community. We're just looking for ways to evolve it and make it a little bit better. And this is one of those steps in that direction with the support of the council, moving forward with the support of the traffic commission. Thank you for your time tonight and thank you. If anyone else has any additional questions following this meeting, please give me a call or send me an email. I'd be happy to, to exchange more correspondence and hear the concerns of your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you and great job.
Next item is councillor 24-338, a communication from the chief of planning and community development requesting adoption of the city's housing production plan.
Good evening, councillors. I have a brief, a brief presentation, neither as detailed nor as aesthetically pleasing as my colleague in the parking department. But what, what I want to do quickly is just address, over the course of the last couple of months, as I've been talking with all of you about the housing production plan, heard your concerns, heard some things you wanted tweaked. I wanted to present a few tweaks, which I think responded pretty well to a lot of the discussions I've had with you about the plan. I'll be very quick going through those and then happy to take any questions you have about the plan itself beyond that. You guys have seen that. All right. So the first proposed change that I wouldn't, I'm not sure if it was unanimous, but pretty much across the board, folks had some issue with a strategy related to allowing single-room occupancy for permanent supportive housing, otherwise known as SROs. I'm proposing that we remove that from the plan, which seemed like it had pretty widespread agreement among the council. And then there's a few different areas where I'm proposing that we modify the existing language today. And in each one, I have a citation going back to the page number of the production plan. The first is page 11, notes purchasing the right of first refusal from current owners of multifamily buildings. This was an item that I think there was a lot of confusion about at the last council meeting. And just to set the record straight, there was something that happened, and councillor Kelly referenced it, in Cambridge and Somerville, where there was actually a program where tenants were supposed to be given the right of first refusal anytime a multifamily property went up. That's different than what we were offering here, which is actually for multifamily property owners, they could sell the right of first refusal to the city if they wanted to and if we wanted to buy it for a sum, let's say between $1,000 and $5,000. And what that would then allow us is for a 120-day period before property goes on the market, we could consider if we wanted to purchase that and then working with our affordable housing trust, convert it into affordable housing. So again, it's an option, not a requirement like the Cambridge and Somerville model, totally different. So what the proposed change here would be, just in the language, instead of purchasing the right of first refusal, offering multifamily property owners the option to sell the right of first refusal to the city, which then has the opportunity to preserve affordable rentals in the city. So it's just an option with an opportunity that the city has afforded, but it's not a requirement as it was sort of stated in that initial flyer we talked about in December. Another proposed change where it notes on page 14, offering surplus city-owned property and specifically calls out the Central Avenue parking lot. I am proposing inserting this language, when redeveloping the Central Avenue lot or maybe if redeveloping the Central Avenue lot, particular consideration must be given to replacing or retaining current parking spots available for the Revere Rosetta, Rosetti Cohen Senior Center as part of the plan. And then page 16, which refers to partnering with the MBTA and in particular with the Beauchamp and the Wonderland surface parking lots. I'm proposing adding this language, redevelopment efforts should focus on the Wonderland surface parking lot. If a redevelopment project is considered at the Beauchamp lot, the project must retain the existing parking on-site, which I know was an issue of contention the last time around. And page 17, one of the strategies suggests permit, permitting zero lotline construction. And again, as we talked about in December, it was really only in specific areas. And it was clear if you read more into the details, but to correct the headline, to make sure it aligns with what the plan actually says, I'm proposing adding this language, permit zero lotline construction in certain mixed-use neighborhoods such as Broadway and Shirley Avenue. And page 18 says allow by right two and three-family homes in all residential districts. And I'm proposing a tweak here to say in certain residential districts. And again, not to belabor the point of our December meeting, but all these things would require future council votes, in particular, any zoning changes we'd make. But we, we could then talk about which zones that might be appropriate. The bulk of the city currently already offers two-family construction. The one thing I'd be trying to solve for with two families is, you can actually keep the slide up for, or my, if we can get rid of Toucan Sam. I don't know how to move that over. I don't choose the backgrounds for what it's worth. That's, that's Microsoft. Okay. So this is a simplified, simplified way that I describe how and where two families are allowed in the city today. Not very simple. So I think with regard to two-family construction, I would want to simplify, simplify our zoning code so it was really clear what areas it was appropriate and which areas they are not currently allowed. And then with three-family housing, triplexes, we actually currently treat a three-family development the same as we do a 475-unit building. They're all considered apartments. So I think the, the suggestion there, and again, this is something that at a future date, the council could vote on if, if they determined it was appropriate, would be to add three families as a use in the use table and consider where it might be appropriate with, within the city. Because I think we would all agree a three-family development is different than a 475-unit apartment. So that's, that's all the proposed removals and modifications and happy to answer any questions you might have to that end.
Thank you, Tom. Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I read your article this weekend and, and in the article, it said that you should first identify undeveloped, undeveloped sites like the Revere Housing Authority. You should take a look at the options first. So I'm thinking about how we were going to put a high school. There was a proposition on the table that we were supposed to put a high school where the Housing Authority is in Revere. In Orient Heights, they took a dilapidated project unit. It was as big as probably the one in Revere, probably bigger. And they took it down and they made these beautiful, gorgeous housing, affordable houses for people in Orient Heights and Boston. Why can't we do that? We have old, there, I mean, these projects that we have on Coolidge Street and Constitution Ave and everything, they've been there for years. I just don't understand. And there's acres and acres and acres of land that you can put multiple units there. I just don't understand why we haven't looked at that instead of inundating this whole city with seven floors of, of building and, and taking away parking. And these people, I've lived here all my life. I don't want my quality of life to change. I have a housing unit next to me. I don't want him to go up another three floors because he's a single-family house and he can do it. I just, you know, there, so my question to you, and I have a couple of questions because there's a couple of things that I didn't like in this packet. But why aren't we looking at the Housing Authority? I am sure that we could get grants, all kinds of grants, to build multiple units of, of housing, affordable housing. And that would take care of the 20% that we should be at instead of inundating the whole city with, with all this stuff. That's my first question. My second question is, there was a part about cell towers, bringing in cell towers. And I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, to get the rent. Five years ago, you weren't here, myself and Captain O'Hara fought to get the cell towers and the 5Gs out of the city because they, if you read the data, they cause cancer 60 feet from where they are. So, and to, just to maintain the money and not the quality of life of someone, is, it's so wrong. And maybe I'm, I read that wrong, but to bring cell towers into the city, there's, I wrote an ordinance that you can't do it anymore. So, I mean, I just.
It, it sounds like we've got some, something to remove in addition to what we talked about.
Well, the cell towers, it just, they're, they're hazardous.
So I'll address that point first because I think it's the simplest. The, the cell tower payments and I guess the series of different opportunities for revenue for the Affordable Housing Trust that were identified to take, take a bigger, I guess, to confront our affordability crisis in a. to confront our affordability crisis in a more meaningful way than what the Affordable Housing Trust currently gets, 10% of our free cash allocation every year, which I know it's grateful to receive, but that could be anywhere from $500,000 to maybe a million dollars on a good year. And just for context, that can basically fund one affordable unit every year. And so I think we all know if we, and if the Affordable Housing Trust continues to move at that pace, we're not going to make a dent in our affordability goals. So what that section was really about is identifying other opportunities for potential revenue sources to help fund the trust. It wasn't suggesting we bring in cell towers, but if there were opportunities like that where the city, you know, could see a development coming in where we wanted to seek mitigation payments, those mitigations, at least a portion of it, could go to support the trust. Or, you know, in lieu of building affordable housing on-site, they could contribute to the trust to build it off-site. So that was really more about just building the capabilities of the trust through various revenue opportunities. I'd be happy to take that one out if it's just outright prohibited. And then the second question, working with the Revere Housing Authority, we're fortunate to have a great leader at the authority in Dean Harris, who has been thinking a lot about this and helped to influence the production plan as we put it together. And he actually just recently partnered with the mayor's office and my department on getting an RFP out to actually create a master plan for the Coolidge Avenue complex, which I agree, it's over 40 acres. It's a pretty significant opportunity, not just to build new housing, but to build safer streets for the kids and seniors that live there, to build parks and playgrounds that are more receptive to the needs of the kids in the neighborhood, and just generally to build a better neighborhood. The one thing I would say, I guess the one area I might differ from you, is I think there is a real need and a value in not concentrating all of our affordable housing in one location, but kind of spreading throughout the city, and I think we've all seen kind of pitfalls of concentrations of poverty in certain neighborhoods and not others, and I think there is a, I think, a real benefit to the city if we spread this out throughout the city.
Thank you, Tom. Councillors, we're moving towards a hard stop at 6:00 PM, so if we could just pick it up a little bit. Councillor Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, thank you for all this work, and it is a lot of hard work, and I can appreciate a lot of it, but two things are in my mind now. First, there are actually three. First of all, any of these changes, I'd like to see something solid in writing that's clean, rather than having to pick out the lines that you make, the proposals, the changes that you make. Second of all, I have an issue with zero lotline, especially down in my neighborhood. So dense, and fire protection is a big, big thing, and when you have zero lotline, you can't put windows within five feet, you know, within five feet of a building and a lotline. And you can't put windows there, and you're going to have problems squeezing in bedrooms into these buildings, and I have a problem with the zero lotline. That's number one, as far as that's concerned. I have an issue putting seven-story building, especially on Shirley Ave. Okay, everything on Shirley Ave is five-story max, and I have a problem with any seven-story building. Shirley Ave is a business district, and, you know, it's fine you want to do seven stories someplace else, but I also have a problem with seven stories going into a RB district, you know, down, specifically down the Garfield area, which is part of Joanne's area, down in the Garfield elderly projects. I have a problem with a seven-story building going down there. So, you know, I, I think we ought to think about that, and, and I think I would go against anything that squeezed in seven stories high, especially in Shirley Ave.
On that last point, seven stories, could you point to where that is in the production plan so we could consider?
It is in the production, and I write it too.
I guess, okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for your presentation. I liked some of the changes, and, but my colleague triggered me because she mentioned the Orient Heights housing and, it's beating a dead horse, but the original site for the new high school was going to be in the Coolidge area, and that would have gave the residents that beautiful housing that they had in East Boston as a trade-off, and we wouldn't have been taking land off the tax rolls. So that's beating a dead horse, but it's, it's something that, when I hear it, my blood boils, because we could have had that for the residents of housing, they could have had nice housing, we could have had a great location, central location for high school, and not take a billion two off the tax rolls. So I know I strayed there, but I appreciate the leeway, Mr. President. But I do, I do like some of your changes. That doesn't mean I'm going to vote for this. That doesn't mean I'm going to support it after it's voted on. I'm going to support the projects that come before me, but I do like the way you've tweaked your changes. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hermio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will try to be brief here, because we've got three minutes, but, so I just have some questions. All the, a lot of the changes you're proposing in this HPP, which again, are just a proposal, we're not voting on any ordinance changes, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Most of the things that are happening that you're proposing here are done through private market equity developers, is that right? Or would affect those developments?
It's a mix. Yeah, but that's a good portion of it.
It's a good portion of it. Who is currently building in the city, private or public dollars?
Primarily private.
Private dollars. And every single time that they come up here for this, for a special permit, it usually gets granted, and those have been largely private dollars?
Yes.
And by and large, in the last five years, most of those projects have gone through?
Yes.
Okay. And so how can private dollars build affordable housing if we are not able to, like, what are the costs that go into building affordable housing for a private developer?
So, depends on the project, but, you know, certain levels of affordability that you reach, you have different requirements vis-à-vis ADA accessibility, creating a larger portion of two- and three-family units than you might in a market-driven project, and so there are additional costs associated with some of the hoops you have to jump through at the state and the federal level to access the different resources, you know, both tax credits, state incentives, and so forth.
I've got like 30 seconds left. So what are some cost offsets to ensure that private developers, which are the ones that are clearly bringing money into the city, just can you rattle off a few that would ensure that we can have more affordable housing in all the new development here, and we can keep Revere residents in Revere?
Connecting with state and federal resources and providing local tax breaks where appropriate.
Is there anything relative to construction cost?
I think those would indirectly affect construction costs.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Skorowski, thank you for coming. This housing production plan, is this something that the state is requiring us, every city and town, to have in place?
They're not requiring us, but if a, if a community has less than 10% of their housing deemed restricted, affordable, it is a recommendation, and then it is something, if a developer comes in and, you know, to your point, councillor, says they want to build a seven-story development, but our zoning says six stories allowed, they could do it, because we don't have safe harbor, because we don't have a housing production plan, and we're under that 10% limit.
Okay, so if we were to vote for this, and I know almost all aspects of this plan need to be, go through zoning and what have you, if we systematically then start to dismantle the plan, how would the state feel about that?
I think the most important thing to the state at the end of the day is, are we making impactful, you know, changes in our affordability levels, working either a half or a full percent towards closing that 10% affordability gap?
Okay, and just one more question. The two- and three-family homes by right, I know where you said we'd be limiting those, what's to prevent developers from coming in, popping these things in place, and just charging exorbitant rent?
Nothing would prevent them from doing that. I mean, I think the thought process, and it's pretty well, well-found out in the data and studies over time, is that's the best way we can create kind of middle income. This isn't going to create affordable housing. This is going to create workforce housing. Think of housing for a lot of the folks in City Hall, or teachers, and firefighters, and police officers. It provides that missing middle, as they'd say, but nothing is necessarily preventing them from doing that, but I think it'll always be a more affordable option than an amenity-rich, large development that has pools and, you know, the full nine yards.
Thank you very much. All set, Mr. President?
Thank you, councillor. Anyone else? Well, since we're running out of time, we're going to keep this in committee, Tom. If you could please clean it up with the recommendations the councillors asked, meet with the councillors if they have any questions or concerns, and then we'll bring this forward at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for the business of committee of the hold.